Executive session under Master and Law's Chapter 38, Section 21a2 to conduct strategy in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel, AFSCME, fire, police, and dispatchers. And executive session number two under Master and Law's Chapter 38, Section 21a3 to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation in an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body and the chair, so declares. So if you'd have a motion?
Sure, it's been sounding awful lot like what you just read.
Right.
I will move that the Select Board vote pursuant to Master and Law's Chapter 38, Section 21a Clause 3, go into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with town unions, since hoping we may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the board, and move that the Board has elected to vote pursuant to Master and Law's Chapter 38, Section 21, subsection A, clauses 3 and 7, to convene in the executive session to discuss strategy with respect to litigation, since an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the board, and the chair, so declares, and to reconvene an open session thereafter. In addition, I invite Chairperson Ivan Pigasik of the Movement for Electric Light Water Commissioners to join. After his time, we will return to open session.
Portion for May.
Aye.
Portion for May in second, and all those in favor, Mr. North, Mr. Glady, Mr. Nordhaus, Mr. DeCous, and Cindy Nappery is aye. And so we will now be convening into executive session, and we'll be rejoining shortly in our open session.
All right, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Good evening, Littleton, and welcome to the Select Board meeting for Monday, December 21st, 2020. We're going to begin this evening's meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the Republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, and justice for all. So to begin tonight's meeting, we will have organization and a reading of the mail that will be followed by Department Board updates and requests. We have a COVID-19 update. We have LCTV approval fee agreement with cable license with respect to cable license renewal, and we have some donations to accept on behalf of Elder and Human Services. That will be followed by public input and members' updates. At 7:00 PM, we have a licensing request from Salute, 1204 Constitution Avenue, for an all-alcohol license pursuant to Master and Law, Chapter 138, an amendment to that license for the opening of hours on Sundays from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. That will be followed by Select Board discussion with respect to town meeting. We have a prepared preparation task list to review, organization of the building department, reorganization of the building department. We will discuss board champions for that task as well. We'll have a review of a personnel bylaw. This is just a preliminary discussion by the board. We have a bolishment of outdated articles and regulations to discuss, as well as implementation of organizational recommendations in the town government study. That will be followed by the town administrator or assistant town administrator update. We have an update on 119 to Hattawayon Road, a vote to purchase, a vote to execute the purchase and sale agreement. We have the Cooper Farmhouse, a vote to execute the deed and take possession of the farmhouse. Nagog Hill Orchard, we have a vote to authorize the request for proposal. With respect to non-retail marijuana establishment amendments, we have a vote to approve amendments. And 12 Robinson Road, we have a discussion about the disposition of the property. As well as Cooper Wellington Connector Trail, we have a grant submission authorization. We have a, we're going to discuss the Select Board meeting schedule and local rapid recovery planning grant, a vote to authorize submission of that grant. That will be followed by meeting minutes, and then we have an anticipated adjournment of our meeting at 8:00 PM this evening. So we're going to begin this evening. Mr. Insaldi, if you could lead us up.
Madam Chair, but first, Mark, can you elevate Selectman DeCous to the panelists, please? Okay. All right, there we go. All right, thank you, Madam Chair. Just a few items. We received notification from the Commonwealth of the Mass Department of Telecommunications and Cable. It's actually one of your agenda items. The cable license, and that should say license with Verizon New England, expiring 10, 12, 2021. So the ascertainment needs to be completed by June 4th in 2021. So as you're going to have time to packet us to start that, an agreement with between LCTV and a law firm to get us through the ascertainment process. The second item, and I believe I mentioned it last week, is from the Commonwealth of the Mass Department of Revenue. The Commissioner of Revenue has determined that the locally assessed values of rail and personal property in our municipality represent full and fair cash valuation as of January 1st, 2020, for fiscal year 2021, and that these proposed property assessments satisfy the minimum requirements for certification. And the third item is the Mass Municipal Association is once again putting on the Finiat Seminar, and that is in conjunction with Suffolk University this spring, and it's going to start on March 20, during the month of March in 2021. The application deadline is, deadline is for January 15th, and that's at 5:00 PM. And one of the reasons I wanted to discuss this just briefly is I know that there's been a moratorium on spending, but this is something where unless the board has objections, I'd like to see if we could send one of our new finance team members, Anna DeRosa, and also our assistant town administrator, Joe Layden, to attend this seminar. I believe it's $400 per person. It's, I think it'd be very helpful to them. It's a great seminar. So if the board would, has no objection, I'd like to move forward on that.
You don't need a motion on that, do you, Anthony?
No, unless there's objection. Here and none. I thank you. And that's it, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. So next on the agenda, we have a COVID-19 update.
Yeah, Madam Chair. So I went to last week's Board of Health meeting, and Resident Katrina Wilcox-Hadwick did a fantastic job updating the Board of Health with regard to COVID, our numbers, the governor's new guidance. I asked her if she would do the same for the board here tonight, so the residents of Littleton can know what's going on in our community and across the Commonwealth. So if we could elevate Katrina, and I'll stop sharing my screen as she has a PowerPoint to go through. Hi, Katrina.
Hi, everyone. Find my slides. Where are the slides? You guys can see them?
Can.
Yeah. All right. Well, thank you for inviting me tonight. I am an epidemiologist in town. I've been doing research on disease epidemiology and drug safety for 14 years now. In the last three months, I've been helping the school committee and the Board of Health try to understand the COVID data as they kind of walk through decisions that they need to make. So tonight, I'm going to hopefully do a quick pass-through for you guys, and try to focus on what happened since Thanksgiving, because I think with the holidays approaching, it's a really important time to see what the impact was of Thanksgiving, and see if there's anything that we can avoid, hopefully after Christmas. So, um, this is the, every day, the Department of Public Health publishes a daily dashboard, and this is the graph that was on it. All the statistics that I'm presenting tonight were those that were done last updated on Thursday, last Thursday, when the town level data and the state data came out, and I just didn't update it. So your slide packets were the same as you're looking at them. So this shows you the curve, the amount of COVID spread since the beginning of the pandemic. So in March, this is the March uptick, and then we've been pretty good. And then in the last month and a half, we've just had, and we're in our second wave, and not only are we in our second wave, but it's two times higher than we were in the spring. So these are snapshots of four of the main metrics that the DPH publishes daily. These are, so it's total test positivity, daily confirmed cases, daily confirmed hospitalizations, and daily confirmed deaths. And these each tell you slightly different things about what's going on in the statewide data. There's no doubt that for all of these, the, they were on the increase in November, but when each of these, the red lines, the vertical red lines are Thanksgiving, and the pace of the increase has really increased following the holiday weekend. So the two that I really want to highlight today are the total test positivity. That's the total number of tests that are positive divided by the total number of tests conducted by date. And at Thanksgiving, it was at, sorry, that's this dark blue line. It was about 3.4%, and the two weeks after Thanksgiving, we hit about 6%. So that was a rapid increase. And then this is the daily confirmed cases. And we've been on a rise from November. After the governor put in place the stay-at-home advisory and the mask order, we had a somewhat of a leveling off. And then after Thanksgiving, we've had this rapid, this is exponential growth. It's a nearly vertical line. And if you think of that like a speedometer on a car, the more vertical your line is, the, you know, your foot's on the gas pedal, you're rising at a rapid pace. So that's concerning, really concerning. I think in the last few days, we've leveled off a little bit. We've, you know, two weeks past Thanksgiving, the data catches up. That's 14-day, the 14-day incubation period has elapsed. So we're hitting this pause, but then we're about to hit two more holidays that would be concerning. The other thing that the governor's been, and we can see in the data, is that the hospital capacity is really under some strain. I think the last week, it was 85% of non-Icu capacity and 73% of ICU capacity was under use. So that's a real indicator that we've got a lot of things happening and our healthcare system can't, may not be able to keep up much longer if it keeps, the cases keep rising. And right after Thanksgiving as well, the number of reported deaths really started to climb at a more quick pace. It doubled from the beginning of November until now, the number that are reported each day. So the governor, last week's press conference, I don't remember which day, he ran through that, you know, it takes two to three weeks after a holiday for the data to catch up. So he, last week, ran through the experience of the state level following Thanksgiving. So he reported that based on one week following Thanksgiving, there was a 96% increase in the number of new cases per day, a 93% increase in hospitalizations, 73% increase in patients who are in the ICU, 104% increase in intubations, and 84% increase in deaths, and that was the one-week period following Thanksgiving. So holiday weekends really, when we're out mixing with people, socializing, that's the, having meals together, those are the prime environments where COVID likes to spread, and it's where it thrives. And holiday weekends kind of have all of those elements together, and we could see it in Massachusetts data. So in many ways, the characteristics of Littleton that maybe drew us, a lot of us here, actually have helped protect us from the pandemic so far, but we're not an island unto ourselves. The way the state trends, Littleton also tends to trend that way as well, just a little slower to get there. So this is, every week, the Mass DPH reports the town level, number of cases that occurred in the two-week period preceding that report. And so this is, I've been graphing this week after week, starting in, since they started reporting it in mid-August, I'm sorry. So this last week, the report came out on 12/17, so that, that would have been the two weeks ending, I think it's 12/14. So two weeks post Thanksgiving, we had the record number of cases reported in a single week since the spring. That was 58 cases. And that is actually double the number of cases that were reported two weeks prior to that. This is the 12/3 report. That data would have, the time period measured would have ended the day after Thanksgiving, so that would not have captured the Thanksgiving cases that occurred that weekend. And the reason I compare one week compared to two weeks prior is because of there's, it's a 14-day period. So there's a, these two weeks overlap, and then this is another distinct group. So these are two different groups of patients representing about a month's worth of data. And you can see that we've had a doubling following the holiday weekend. So if you go back to that car accelerator analogy I just used, the bigger the jump in the number of cases, and we also had an increase in test positivity from 3% to 4.86% in the same time period, the more COVID is being transmitted around our community. And what we really need to do is start depressing the break a little bit, and, which will help to keep our schools open and our businesses open. And the goal is to keep things open and just kind of minimize spread as much as we can along the way. So this is, I graphed actually the entire experience for Littleton. So this is Littleton's curves from the beginning of the, beginning of the pandemic. So back in April and May, remember, there was the Life Care Center outbreak, and that was the most of the cases that we were experiencing here in town came from that cluster. And then in June, we actually had no cases reported. In July and August, we were, only had four in each of the months. And school started in September, and there were more openings from the state, the biggest openings, the more lenient things came out in the same timeframe. And in October, there was more loosening of reopening. And then November, we have Thanksgiving. So in total to date, Littleton has had 258 reported cases since the start of the pandemic, and that means that those 58 cases that were reported in last week's report represent 22% of our total cases since the beginning. And that just happened following a weekend. And if you look, look closely, you can see that we've got a doubling event month after month happening. You have 12, 23, 40. They're not quite doubling, but then this time, so far in December, we have 77 cases reported to date, and there's still two more reports to come out in December. So we're not done December, and we've already had a doubling, or near doubling event. So this is concerning. So increases in the amount of COVID that circulate in our communities can really impact things like schools and businesses. And as community rates rise, so do the chances of finding cases in schools and business settings. And when there are cases in those settings, you're more likely to have close contacts that then need to quarantine, which causes disruptions in services. And that services like postal offices and groceries and teachers and town hall, you know, any, anything that's how you're trying to provide a service, if someone has to quarantine, you have more strain on your, your systems and your businesses. So this graph is actually, depicts a local example of what can happen. These are the health notification letters that the school sends out to families whenever there's a case in the school, Littleton Public School System. So before Thanksgiving, there had been a total of five cases, one remote student and two, sorry, two in October and two in November that were among the hybrid community, those who are in the building at some point in time. And then we had Thanksgiving, and the week following Thanksgiving, so the 14-day incubation period, it's the same timeframe, families received notices of 10 cases among our school community. And what's important about this is remember that every time there's, COVID really spreads highly within families and households, there are places where you're sharing air within a house. So whenever you find a case in your school setting, you're likely to have family members at home who are also COVID-positive. And these kind of peaks after holidays have real impacts on people's lives, their ability to work, and also impact our economy. So as a, as a town, if there's any ways we can try to minimize that impact, then that's a good thing, because it can keep schools open and businesses open. Thankfully, we returned down to a kind of a much more lower level since the two weeks after Thanksgiving had elapsed. So what can we do? So no single thing that we can do is perfect. If you think of each layer of protection, they each have holes on them like a slice of Swiss cheese. So, but when they're used together and put together in a block, you have, it's much more hard to get through the hole, because the hole will stop halfway through. They don't line up, basically. So we need to use multiple layers of these cheese, or interventions to try to lower the risk of spread in our communities. The less spread, the more likely our schools and our businesses can stay open, and your services aren't disrupted. So some of these layers really rely on individual personal responsibilities. That's things like staying home if you're sick, or wearing masks, limiting your time if you're in a crowded environment. And then there are things that are shared. So things like trying to check our ventilation systems, getting outdoor, meeting outdoors, quarantine and isolation, that's like the contact tracing that the Board of Health is involved in. And then the government messaging and financial support and vaccines. And we have a vaccine coming at us, and we just have to try to keep our rates low, as low as we can before most of our residents can access one, which will be sometime, I'm thinking, in the summer, given the new information coming out. So things that we've learned from our Board of Health is that the majority of our cases in our area are tied to social gatherings and family transmissions. And that means for Littleton, the layers of cheese that if we can change or encourage people to use, that will have the most impact on our metrics, are those related to these individual decision-making responsibilities. The things like wearing a mask and trying to limit the number of social gatherings we have, trying to meet outside instead of inside when we do see friends, things like that. But that doesn't mean there aren't things that our boards can, there, there are things that our boards can do that could actually help support those activities and choices. So I know you guys have already done a number of them, actually. Things like securing the CARES Act funding to get the infrastructure we need to help protect our employees is, is an example of the government messaging and financial support. And then also, this, you know, the Board of Health and the school committee have asked me to, to present every meeting so that I can run through what's happening, which is another way of consistent messaging coming out whenever possible. So this, I just wanted to show you some of the, how our, how Littleton looks in comparison to the towns that actually we share a border with. So this graph depicts the average daily incidence rate per 100,000 among Littleton and then, in our border communities. And I actually control, control for population here so that we can actually compare town to town, even though our populations are different. So Littleton is this bright blue line, the dark light, bigger, older, bright blue line. And the average, when you take Littleton and all of the communities that we touch together, is the black line. So for the entirety of October, Littleton's rate was actually higher, end of September through October, Littleton's rate was actually higher than everyone around us. And in mid-October, we had had a series of weeks where we just kept going up, and in mid-October, a few things started to change. So that's when the Board of Health and the school committee asked me to start presenting at every meeting, so they could understand the metrics that they would need to use for decision-making. The Select Board, you guys made a really tough decision right before Halloween to cancel trick-or-treating, and that sent a signal that things weren't the same. And then you guys also followed up with the MaskUp 01460 initiative, when the signs that have been placed around town, that's another way that messages have gotten out, that this is an important thing that we need to do. So all of these things work together to help send a message that really people need to help support using good public health choices in their everyday life. And it takes a couple of weeks for an effort like this to be seen in the data, but if you look, Halloween was our, at that point, Halloween was our peak, and for, I think, three weeks, we were, our rate of increase slowed. That didn't mean we went down, but we were, we were holding steady. We had put the lid on the pot, and it wasn't rising, it wasn't boiling over, which was great. And so we ended up, that little, that putting our foot on the brake actually put us back in line with the average for all the communities that we border, right us, right on the average, basically, put us right back in line with the communities around us. And, which is great, that we slowed our growth, we can do this, you know, we showed that we, a little bit of effort, and we can actually have an impact on our data. And then Thanksgiving came, and our rate of growth following, coming out of Thanksgiving was much sharper. The slope is much steeper than those around us, outside of, this is surely, last week. But we are among the highest, or back up to the, among the highest in our area, among the towns that we touch. So that's unfortunate. What we learned from the Neshoba Associated Board of Health is that the most recent cases in Littleton in our area are really coming from social gatherings and family spread. We know that not, and we know a lot of people changed what they did for Thanksgiving, and I'm very grateful that a lot of people changed their family holiday plan. But we also know that some people did gather, and coming out of that, there were more cases. So Christmas and this school vacation week and New Year's really have this, it will shift up our social routine. We're not going to go to work, we're not going to school, we're going to have more time to figure out how to entertain ourselves. So these, this next week and a half really has some potential to increase the rates around Littleton if we can't get the message out that people should wear masks and distance, and try to limit their gatherings as much as they can. And it is, it is those collective, individual choices that will have a measurable impact on our, on our metrics, and that will have an impact on what happens at our schools and our businesses. So the challenge we really face is how to get these messages out to residents on, of this town on an ongoing basis, and in a way that encourages people to keep making good public health choices until we can get everyone vaccinated, so that this hopefully isn't continued issue over time. So holiday gatherings, and this is some information from the state. So holiday gatherings have all the social dynamics that COVID thrives under. It's group, groups of people hanging out for long durations of time, most likely indoors, given the time of year, unmasked and sharing a meal. And given the escalation of COVID transmission in our state following Thanksgiving, it's really concerning that we're coming up to this week and a half period where we're going to have holidays, multiple holidays and a vacation thrown in. And these holidays are about celebrating together and being together. So the safest option is to celebrate with those you live with, who you live with, and then gather with others virtually. But I recognize that not everyone's going to make that choice. So if you do choose to gather with others, there's, you got to remember to layer up your cheese. At this point, you can't quarantine, there's not enough time to quarantine before Christmas. But you can try to get a test before you gather, you can wear a mask, you can still distance from people when you're in the same house together, you can open doors and windows to improve ventilation, or if you can meet outside, it's even better. Shorter duration visits are safer than multi-day gatherings. And if you do choose to gather, it's really important to quarantine, test, and check for symptoms after your gathering event to protect the spread in the community come January. So this website here is one that the state puts out, and it has a lot of information about how to reduce risk over the holidays, and also about all the information about the travel order and testing and things like that. So I highly encourage anyone who, actually everyone, to read the site. So that's mass.gov/holidaysduringcovid19 Massachusetts. And then I want to end on the MaskUp 01460 campaign. So I really appreciate, I saw the signs all the way up at the point when I went up there today, which was great, and I've seen them all, you know, on, when I, or King Street and at the transfer station. So all those things are really great to see out there. One of the main things we can do every day is to put on a mask when we're around people that we don't live with, and masks help to protect. And masks help to protect the people you are with, but also they help to protect yourself. There's a lot of research coming back that like the mask wearer has protection as well. The state mask order is very clear. It says everyone is required to wear a mask when in public, whether that's indoors or outdoors. So if you're out and about, hanging out with friends, playing in the snow, taking a walk, you should have a mask with you, just in case you're around someone who does not live with you. And then it's important because masking up is one of those layers that will help us keep Littleton's businesses and schools open, especially in this new year, as we hopefully come to a close of the end of COVID. At least that's the hope. That's all I have today.
Excellent. Katrina, thank you so much for your hard work on this and for coming to the, to our board tonight to share this information. I have seen your previous presentations at Board of Health meetings. And I know that everybody appreciates the work and information that you're providing to the community. Are there any questions or comments from the board?
Chuck, I like.
I'm sorry, I'm just seeing.
You told me to mask up, Katrina, I'm doing.
I love it.
My ears.
It's good, well done.
Thank you very much. This is very informative. It definitely helps to paint the picture even, even more vividly than what we hear on a daily basis.
Yeah, brings it home, that's for sure. I mean, we're, it's hard. I know a lot of people have changed what they've been doing and we're saying, keep doing it or try to add a layer. And I know not everyone, not everyone's in the same position. And I totally understand that. And it's just, can you add a mask? Can you do one less social gathering? Can you, I don't know, come up with a virtual way that's fun? Like, it's, it's hard. This is definitely a hard year. And I hope we can come together as a community just to, just to keep that lid on as much as we can.
Absolutely.
We, we daily get the dashboard from the state, but it's very much appreciated. I'm sure the town as a whole has seen the Littleton piece drawn out particularly and appreciate as well, you're, you're both pointing out graphically dated, driven by data where our efforts have, have shown some impact. And then just as importantly, you know, the trend lines we can't ignore. So what you're doing, I think, helps very much for any actions we take, Board of Health takes, School Committee takes. If people can understand it, they're more willing to go along with it, and that's borne out. So this, this helps.
I'd also like to echo Chuck's, thanks to you for the work you've done. You've been hanging in here and doing it for quite a while now. The consistency is great, and I hope you keep it up because I think the messaging is incredibly important. You know, obviously, people got complacent. I think over the summer, we had the advantage of the weather helping us, and now we don't have that anymore. And so it's a combination of that, and also people are not taking as much care as they did. I do have one brief question. I know there was a lot of debate about schools being hybrid or remote. And that slide, it did appear as though there was a sudden, like, surge of cases. But it, it sounds like what you're saying is the majority of those may, it seems to have originated at home. Is it, is that accurate? And schools may not be a driver of this, of spreading?
It's a really good question, and there's a lot of researchers still doing research on that exact question. So what, from the research that I have read, it really does seem that community rates, the higher community rates get, the more likely you're to, you will be finding cases in settings like schools or life, you know, long-term care centers, all those places where people, large numbers of people gather. In Littleton, the school system is the largest gathering spot we have in town, and it's a place where we're measuring and looking for people. So it's, it was not a surprise to see cases come up into the school, given the doubling we had following Thanksgiving. So far, and I've, I've had the benefit of talking directly to Dr. Clinchy about their process and to understand the data that they have and, and what's public and to, to start trying to dig into what we can actually use for data and decision-making here as a local level. And I know that they are in touch with the Neshoba Board of Health nurses and contact tracers there. And every time there's a case that they're going through their system and making sure that they identify any close contacts or notify anyone who's, they need to notify. They're, they're working closely with them, which is great. As another piece of that government, that's another layer of cheese, if you will. And so that's, that's really reassuring. As my kids are in the schools, like, they're in the buildings. And so it's reassuring to know that, that there are people keeping an eye on that as much as they are. So those cases that arose right after Thanksgiving were not necessarily in the building. They were just among the school community. So another thing people could do to keep cases out of the schools, if someone's sick or if you have known exposure before you get tested and know if you are a case or not, is to try to keep people out of those buildings where a lot of people gather as much as you can. The schools have talked about that. Their messaging that they send out every Friday in the school newsletter, the nurses are doing a fantastic job with that education piece. So I commend them for that, too. But yeah, so far, it, in my understanding, is it does not appear that Littleton has had in-school transmission. There are examples around Massachusetts starting to arise where there has been in-school transmission. So it's a pot, like, when you have more cases arising in a community, you're more likely to have clusters and transmission in that setting. So it is a concern. And that is part of the reason why if we can, as a community, keep our rates as low as possible, we're going to keep schools safe, as safe as possible, and keep people in them, which I know a lot of people really want their kids there. I do.
Thank you.
Great, great. Thank you. Thanks again, Katrina. Is there any other questions or comments from the board for Katrina? Thank you so much for your time and your hard work.
Apologize, I threw you off your agenda timeframe.
Oh, don't worry about it. It's well worth it. Yeah.
We're perfectly capable of doing that all by ourselves.
Well, thank you.
Great, thanks again.
Happy holidays.
You too, thanks.
Yeah, look, even, yeah.
Thanks, Madam Chair. And one other thing, if I may, I received correspondence from the NA PC summarizing the federal leaf bill that happened over the past weekend. A little bit on the municipal side, I think the thing that I'm most happy to see is that they extended the deadline for municipalities to use the CARES Act, and that goes through the end of calendar year 2021. So I'm looking forward to the Commonwealth coming up with some guidelines on, on how that's going to look for us. But that's, that's good news right there. Certainly would have liked more, but that's, that's, that's good.
That's excellent. Thanks for that update. So the next item on the agenda, Mr. Anzaldi, we have a client fee agreement for cable license renewal?
We do, and I did see Alan McCray and Executive Director Mark Quarry from LCTV. Elevate them.
Good evening.
Hi, Mark.
Good evening.
So Mark, why don't you give a brief update or overview of this to the board?
Sure. Actually, I just want to let you know, William Vales, Bill Vales, he's our new Cable Advisory Committee Chairman. So he's on this as well here. And Alan McCray, who's handled the last two licenses between the cable companies in the town, is fortunate enough to be involved with this again. So I'd rather have them talk because they're more experts than I am.
Okay, certainly.
Bill, there.
Hi, I, oh, hi. Alan, go ahead. Hi, I'm Bill Vales, and I'm the new chairman taking over from Alan McCray. And as the letter stated in your packet, we're coming up for contract renewal for both Comcast and Verizon. And as part of that, we go through this so-called ascertainment procedure where we assess the performance, the past performance of both Verizon and Comcast on their contracts. And we're in the process of doing that now. And the contracts expire Comcast August 24th and Verizon on December 10th. And we're at the point now that we need to engage with an attorney that will represent us in contract negotiations for new contracts. And we've selected Peter Epstein, who has provided these services for us in the past. And we need to move forward on that. And that's where we are at, at this point.
And we, I'm sorry, yeah. Go ahead.
No, you go ahead, Alan.
No, I was just saying that Peter has been our, our guide for the last three contracts. So we've got a 20-year association with him, and his company does this exclusively. So we have a lot of faith in Peter, and we'd like to, to move forward with that. And so that's why we're asking you to, to sign off on the agreement with Epstein in August, and then we can start moving forward.
Yeah, we do have a motion, Madam Chair. And I just, as the board members might recall, I believe Attorney Epstein actually accompanied you folks at one of the last go-rounds, that we had a particular set of issues on the table for potential changes from the federal level. Is that right, Alan? You recall that? And you brought in Attorney Epstein to meet with us. So we, you know, we, I remember him particularly. And if he's your guy, then that's who we want to keep working with.
Yes, absolutely.
Great.
Ready for motion, Madam Chair?
Please.
Okay, I move that the Select Board vote to approve the client fee agreement with Attorney Peter J. Epstein for the law firm of Epstein in August, LLP, to assist LCTV through the cable television renewal process.
Second.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. All those in favor, Mr. Glavy?
Aye.
Mr. DeCoste?
Mr. DeCoste is aye.
Mr. Nordhaus?
Matthew is aye.
Mr. Knox?
Aye.
And Cindy Napoli is aye. And the motion is approved as written. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And next we have on, screens all over the place.
Sorry, my, my problem.
That's all right. We have an acceptance of a donation?
We actually have three donations, and Ashley is, is in the room. And if we can elevate Ashley, and she can talk us through those three donations.
Hello, everyone.
Hello.
Hello.
Yes, we've received quite a bit of donations.
Oh, we lost Ashley. I'll summarize far until she's able to get elevated back. So the three donations that she has, the first one is a $1,000 donation from the Gore Charitable Foundation. The second, okay, Ashley, I just went through the first donation for the $1,000. And where's that going to, towards?
Thank you. That one's going towards the Council on Aging Energy Assistance Program. So number one and number two are both going into that program. So $1,000 donation from the Gore Charitable Foundation, and then the $7,500 donation from the Henry Vincent Cooper Foundation. And lastly, we received a $500 donation from Barbara and John Massapica, and that's going into our program and outreach account.
Terrific. Do I have a motion, Madam Chair?
Madam Chair, could I just have a brief statement first?
Sure.
Um, I, I lived next, the Gores were our next-door neighbors for more than, a little more than 15 years. And I don't know how many people knew them, but Doug was a brilliant scientist and a very generous man. I think he worked, he worked for NASA and the DOD. And then in his later career, he worked for Stock Car Magazine and went to the Indianapolis 500 every year. And his wife, Sherry, was a talented painter and a teacher, and they were really great neighbors. And a lot of people don't know this, but every year at Christmas, the Gores would give Christina a thick envelope of cash. And the instructions were to give it to anybody in Littleton. It had to be a Littleton person who was in need. And she could never tell the recipients where the money came from. And it was thousands and thousands of dollars over the years. It's like, it's true altruism and true charity. And I just wanted to make sure everyone understood, like, I, I'm, it was nice seeing their name come up again because I miss them, and they were, they were really good people.
That's great. It's great, great to have a story behind the generosity.
Yeah, thank you very much for sharing that, Matthew. So we're ready for a motion, please?
All right. Move that the board vote to accept the $1,000 donation from the Gore Charitable Foundation to the Council on Aging Energy Assistance Program, the $7,500 donation from the Henry Vincent Cooper Foundation to the Council on Aging Energy Assistance Program, and the donation of $500 from Barbara and John Massapica for the EHS Outreach and Programs Gift Account.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. And all those in favor, Mr. Glavy?
Aye.
Mr. Nordhaus?
Aye.
Mr. DeCoste?
Mr. DeCoste is aye.
Mr. Knox?
Aye.
And Cindy Napoli is aye, and the motion is approved as written. Thank you very much, Ashley, and thank you to, uh, seems like we've gotten many donations this year, more than, more than usual for elder and human services. It's really nice, really nice to see generosity for that department.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ashley. So next on the agenda is public input and members' update. Do we have any one for public input, Mr. Leyden or Mr. Anzaldi?
Uh, we have Mark Rambacher. Let me let him speak.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can, good evening.
Hi, Mark Rambacher, representing the Library Trustees. I wanted to give you a quick update on the library project. First, I wanted to thank everyone that participated in our recent tree auction, the Girl Scouts, for the past 10 years have done, made trees. They don't, they donate to the library and they re-auction off. This year's auction raised over $1,600 for the library. So thank you to everyone that participated. Anyone that's been driving by the, by Town Hall can see the project going up. They poured the floor for, for the building, the top floor, this is concrete last week. And we're making good progress on the building. We're still on schedule for a late summer, early fall opening. And everything is coming in either on or under budget so far. So we're looking very good on that angle. And I also wanted to give an update that we are approaching our fundraising goal. We are within about $50,000 of the $1 million we committed to raising. So it's still time to get your name on the wall, and it's still time to donate if, uh, people haven't. And thank everyone that has. So that's what I have. And if there's any questions on the project, I'm more than happy to answer them.
Great, thank you very much. Any questions from the board for Mr. Rambacher?
Appreciate the update.
Appreciate the update, Mark, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do we have any, any other?
Uh, no, that's it for right now, Madam Chair.
All right, great, thank you. So member, member updates, we'll begin with you, Mr. Glavy, please. Do you have anything to share?
Yeah, just, just one. About a month ago, I was happy to report that I successfully worked the traffic detail at the Il Forno Council on, Fresno Council on Aging Rotary Thanksgiving drive-through pickup a meal program, and did it again last week for their Christmas dinner. Seventy-five dinners handed out, and a lot of the seniors who used to be able to socialize, you know, at the, at the meal site center, at least had this opportunity to get out and see friendly faces in a safe setting. And Il Forno is always stepping up to the plate, and the Friends of the Council on Aging Rotary, again, putting the, the time and effort in, and no accidents yet again. So I think I found my niche.
Well done, Mr. Glavy, thank you. Thank you for that update. Mr. DeCoste, do you have anything to share?
Um, I was just looking to bring up an update from the Council on Churches, I believe, is handing out meals for anybody that needs one. I wasn't able to pull up my, my notes. But for those, I think it was on Littleton Citizens Discussion or one of the, one of the, one of the Littleton Facebook pages. So for those that are in need of a meal at the Congregational Church,
the Congregational Church this week, there's a couple of opportunities for folks to swing by and do that. I believe it's on Wednesday, Thursday, in, again, the times, I'll get back to you before we get finished with the public updates.
Right, thank you. Mr. Knox, do you have anything to share?
Just quickly, I know we had some complaints about sidewalks not being done. We found out that was because of an equipment failure, and it's being taken care of. But the reason I want to mention is that sometimes we take things for granted, because I'm out plowing during storms, and I want to credit the Highway Department for our roads being so well done. Because it was the day after the storm that I visited another town looking at Christmas lights on our houses. And many of the streets were still covered with snow, and weren't completely done. And I came back to Littleton, and we were down to bare pavement. So I want to commend them all for all for the services that they provide the town to make us safe.
Great, thank you. Mr. Nordhaus?
I don't have any updates. I'm just curious if there is any photographic evidence of Mr. Glavy in one of those spiffy vests while he was directing traffic.
Uh, no vest, no, no. But I, I had my fall bond coat on the first time around, which is appropriate gear. And it was a little too bracing last week, and I had to pick out my winter coat.
Very good. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. So I have two updates to share. I just wanted to remind the residents about the Littleton Affordable Housing Trust Rental Assistance Program that's available. We are still accepting applicants. And if you or anybody you know is struggling to meet their household rental needs because of the pandemic, or just because of financial hardship, please definitely reach out to Elder and Human Services. You can go to www.littletonma.org, the Department of Elder and Human Services. There's a link there that's available where you can learn more about the program and also download an application. Again, so if you or anybody you know, you think might benefit from this program, certainly take, avail yourselves to this opportunity, and please reach out to that department. The other thing, I just wanted to update the board. I attended the Sustainability Committee meeting this past week. They're, they've reorganized. Renato is now the chair of that committee. They're a very energetic group, and really want to become more involved with the, their mission as, as a sustainability committee. They've met with the Highway Department, they met with Chris Starter to review recycling procedures and data at the transfer station. And they're also very interested in the possibility of having a sustainability coordinator full-time position created here in the town of Littleton. And they've been reaching out to other communities to see what they're doing with respect to sustainability. Some local towns have a full-time sustainability coordinator on, already on staff with those, with their town. So they're looking more into what that role would be, and how maybe potentially it could be incorporated into the building department reorganization, which I know Mr. Nordhaus and Mr. Knox are working with Mr. Mullen on, on that initiative. So I just wanted to just mention that to the board, that they are very active and are, are working hard to, to do some, some good things for the town. So I was, it was nice to see them. It's nice to meet with them and just see how engaged they are. So I appreciate, appreciate their efforts, certainly on behalf of the town and the board. And next we have a licensing request, an amendment to the license for Salute.
Yes, Madam Chair, Salute has contacted us, Deb Carlson, and she's looking to change the hours on Sunday. Currently, it's 2:00 PM to 7:00 PM. The proposed hours would be 10:00 AM to 7:00 PM. In the packet, there was no comments by the police fire. And that's it.
All right, great. Certainly welcome the opportunity to assist this, this business by extending their, their hours. And like you said in the packet, there was no, no concerns or comments from the police or fire department. Any questions from the board with respect to this request?
Just curious if maybe she's, or some representative is in the queue or available to, I don't have any questions, but if they wanted to speak to it.
Is she on the call?
Joe, is Deborah on the phone?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that name?
Deborah Carlson?
No, I don't see, there is a Boston SBSK sex that if they are part of this application, if they can raise their hand, so we can, we can know. Otherwise, it doesn't look like anyone else is on.
I have, I have a related question. I'm curious, and I'm sure someone has thought of this, but the, what, what are the state laws on alcohol serving on Sunday? Isn't it restricted in the morning?
No, Diane did the background with ABCC. There's no issue.
Okay, thank you. Used to be. Once upon a time, there was, yeah.
Well, every time I go into Donlands on Sunday morning to buy, you know, all the beer I need, I can't get it. So what's going on?
I know. I mean, I was actually at that establishment last week, and she had been talking about extending her hours, just because it would help her business to have those morning hours available. So.
And they brunch, that sort of thing, right?
Yeah, exactly, exactly. So.
Now we know what Matthew was doing with those envelopes from the Gores, though.
No, no, that was, that was Christine. I've never touched it. I never touched the cash.
All right, great. I think we're ready for a motion.
Okay, then, yeah, yeah. I guess we'll interpret that the call was that the, anybody in the public had anything interested to say, we, they, they would have had the chance to speak.
Right.
Right, okay. We didn't, we didn't need to go into hearing mode on this either, Anthony, I'm guessing.
No, there was not a requirement. We checked with council, double-checked with council, and no, it's a local level decision to amend the hours.
Okay, thanks. Then I'll move to amend the hours of permitted sale at Salute, DBA Salute Wine Bar pursuant to Mass General法, Chapter 138, Section 12, Annual Liquor License, to allow the sale of on-premises alcohol between 10:00 AM and 7:00 PM, and to authorize the town administrator to notify the Alcohol Beverages Control Commission of this change in hours, and to issue a license reflecting the change in hours.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. And all those in favor, Mr. Glavy?
Aye.
Mr. Nordhaus?
Aye.
Mr. DeCoste?
Mr. DeCoste is aye.
Mr. Knox?
Aye.
Is Joe there?
Aye.
Oh, sorry. And Cindy Napoli is aye. The motion is approved as written, and we've extended the hours of operation for Salute with the point. So the next agenda item is a select board discussion. There's five parts to this, this part of our meeting tonight. And I was, I worked with Mr. Insaldi to put this together. The first item on the agenda is a town meeting preparation task list that I had put together. I know that the planning board is working on their goals for town meeting in May. And I just wanted to try to get the board organized and start thinking about what we might be seeing on the warrant for town meeting in May, and just make sure that we don't lose sight of those initiatives. And, you know, keep track of any work that might need to be done in preparation for town meeting in May. So that is the intent of this agenda item. And I'm just trying to pull up my notes. So, actually, was there, Mr. Layden, was there a grid that I had put together, just a chart?
Um, I'm just looking through the.
Because I thought I had put together just like a task, like an actual list. No, I don't see it.
No, I didn't have anything.
Okay. So I had actually put together an actual list. So we'll have to share that with the board separately, because I just can't recall off the top of my head what items were on that, on that task list. So I was hoping it would be part of the packet, but that's okay. So just, are there any comments or thoughts from the board with respect to just proceeding with that concept, just to prepare us and get us organized for town meeting?
I think it's a great idea. I'm curious to see what you've come up with. I mean, we usually.
Right, I had a list.
Okay, that's good, because usually we've just relied on the administrators being on top of that. But it'd be helpful for us to know what the checklist is, so we play our own role in that and, you know, keep track.
Right. I apologize. I had thought I had sent that over to be included in the packet, but we can just re, we can regroup on that certainly at our next meeting, and get it circulated to the board prior to then. So next on the list was reorganization of the building department. This was something that we had discussed at our last board meeting. Just that Mr. Mullen had come up with sort of a, a plan for reorganization of that department. We're currently working on reorganizing the finance department, and there's going to be more information coming to the board through that process. But at the same time, we've been, we've been discussing, actually, for some time, reorganization of the building department as far back as when we were, we first posted for the building commissioner position. And so there was two members of the board who expressed interest in working with Mr. Mullen on this reorganization. One was Mr. Nordhaus, and the other was Mr. Knox. So the, the sole purpose of having this on the agenda tonight was just to discuss and just let the other board members know that they've expressed interest in working with Mr. Mullen on this initiative. I know there's more information in the packet that really is probably too preliminary, or not really relevant at this point, because it's going to depend on, you know, Mr. Mullen and Matt, Mr. Nordhaus and Mr. Knox coming together and, and putting something together with respect to that department, to then be shared through the proper channels, such as the town administrator, our finance team, our personnel board, and of course, this board here. So I just wanted to just bring this to the attention of the board tonight, and see if they had any questions or comments about that initiative at all.
Madam Chair?
Sure.
Happy to see you go forward. I've been a big supporter of doing this for a long time. And if Matt and Joe are going to take the lead on behalf of us, that's great. Although I hope you'll be open to input. I get thoughts on it. I know that as, as Chair indicated, you know, Ed Mullen has, well, he's not only supplied us with some background information of his own recommendations, but he has been talking about it with some of the other potential affected parties in town hall. And that's the right way, obviously, to do it. You know, I, I just think it ought to be comprehensive enough. There's a couple of compelling issues here. Obviously, the problems we had specific to the building department is one of them. The need to kind of get various stray small departments, at least administratively under one roof, one umbrella, makes a lot of sense. And, you know, and I, I think we need to get the board to help, particularly in the dialogue here, if we're going to consider staffing there in such a way that we have professional help on the town payroll at town hall. It's not a criticism of anybody we've, you know, we use on a contract basis, but the needs, I just think, is so strong now that it's, we're way past the point of being, not being able to justify it financially. We permit fees pay for it anyways now, under its current structure. We just don't have the benefit of having a direct employee. That's a little far afield from this proposal, but I think they need to be considered in the same context. And glad to see it's going somewhere. I suppose that in terms of implementation, it makes sense, if possible, try to get something together, because for town meeting, as, you know, you were just prompting us on, Madam Chair, because this would have implications for both bylaw changes and org chart changes, how the budget picture is set up, et cetera.
Right. Yep. Exactly.
All right. I know that Mr. Nordhaus has spoken to, to Ed too. I spoke with Ed today. We met today. And I, Matthew and I haven't had a chance to talk together. I think all, both of us along with Mr. Mullen have to get together to get, to get this going. But overall, exactly what Paul said, this dates way, way back about the organization of that department. I can also speak as a customer that uses that department quite a bit, that I think it does need to be put under an umbrella that someone has control of all these different small components. It just makes it so much easier. And there's probably some, some other moves that we can make that are partly listed in what Mr. Mullen has spoken about, whether it's the local inspector of, of health, and things like that, might be incorporated all into this. And sustainability might work into this also. So there's a lot of components that kind of need to come together. And it's, I personally, I think it's perfect timing. Matthew, please add on, because we haven't talked about, I know you did speak with Ed.
I agree. I do think it's a good, really is perfect timing. I think the memo from Keith was dated 2009. So yeah, it's been in the works for a while. I really am going to defer to Ed and, and Anthony to work out the administrative details of this. I see my role as primarily being one of communication with the rest of the board. Of course, everyone is going to have input in it.
Right, thanks. Any other comments from other members of the board?
I think Ed's online, if we can have him speak.
There he is.
Good evening, Madam Chair. Good evening, board. First, I just want to say thank you to Matthew and Joe for their willingness to step forward and help me through this process, as it's the first time I've brought a proposal like this to the board. I know in some conversations I've had with our town administrator and assistant town administrator, they've also been very willing and hopeful that we can get something like this moving. It will take some time and some, a lot of effort. I can tell you, I spoke to other members of the land use side of the building. And I think I've got a pretty good consensus that, that all involved are on board, as long as it, you know, we're all looking for a little more help, and we're all looking to support each other in this. So I think we could all benefit from this reorganization.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Mullen. And thank you, Mr. Nordhaus and Mr. Knox, for stepping forward to work, work with Mr. Mullen on this. Next thing on the agenda is we have a review of the Personnel Bylaw. The sole purpose for this being on the agenda this evening is not to make any changes to the Personnel Bylaw, but just to bring it to the board's attention, to see if there's any interest in actually moving forward with this initiative as well. As we are well aware, this past year, there were some various personnel issues that arose with respect, again, to the building department. And we, it came to light through that process that there are certain shortfalls in our Personnel Bylaw. I actually pulled up a copy of it today, and I did send it over to Mr. Layden to circulate to the board, just so that you can take a look at it. But our Personnel Bylaws originated as early as, what year it was? They were originally adopted in 1977, and they were amended in their entirety in 1987. And there's been sporadic amendments here and there. The most recent one was done in 2016. But I was just, I think it's important that we take a look at these bylaws again, maybe compare, we could, it could be as easy as comparing them to what's going on in other communities, and see what examples they may have. But I just wanted to just talk to the board about this tonight, to see if there was any interest in moving forward with this type of project, and who might, might want to take this on.
Well, I, Madam Chair, I am the current board's representative of the Personnel Committee. Selectman Knox preceded me for a number of years, representing the board on the committee. I've only been on since July. But I will say this, I mean, the great work by the individuals who are serving on there, but I'm struck by how unclear it is what our, where our charge began and ends, what's on our, what's in our purview, what's not. It just, it's, it seems clear to me that this is a, another area, especially given some of the incidents you, you spoke to, where we are in, we're in, it's high time to, to do a review for, for an updating of the, the bylaws and policies that are, that are applicable to personnel. We've got new, new personnel staff on board as well recently with the recent hires this, this fall. So the timing, I think, is good there. You know, and for my capacity on the Personnel Committee, I'm happy to, to be as involved as you want. But I also welcome committee, I'm happy to, to be as involved as you want, but I also welcome everybody's input and thoughts on that as well. And I think you mentioned a good place to start as to perhaps in working with Anthony and Joe and the administrative team, scout out some comparative options from other towns and take a look at what's being done elsewhere and, and maybe we can, or they might even know good suggestions that we haven't considered that we might want to compare to our own operation and see where we're deficient and where we can start.
Yeah, I agree. I don't know, Mr. Anzaldi, if you have any suggestions at this point, but on how to move forward with this, you know, I appreciate Mr. Glady's willingness to, to work on this.
Yeah, to Paul's point, I don't know any towns specifically off the top of my head, but certainly we can look into some communities and see what best practices have been put into place and updates to their bylaws that we certainly should be or could be looking at here. So we can do some research on that for sure and then report back to the board.
Okay. That'd be great. Thank you. The other thing on the agenda was the abolishment of outdated articles and regulations. I, I had shared this previously with the board and it's something that again, we should, I think we should revisit in preparation for town meeting in May. We had previously identified some bylaws and regulations that were very outdated and it might just be simple enough just for a quick discussion amongst the board about, you know, moving forward with, you know, abolishing them as, they didn't appear to require any updating. So I could certainly put those into a more comprehensive detailed list for the board to consider, but I just wanted to get that on, on our radar as well. It's something to consider for town meeting in May.
Madam Chair, this is pretty closely related to one of my goals, which is just not, you know, I have not started yet, but is probably the next thing on my list. And if there's more information that you have about outdated articles that you haven't sent me already, I'm happy to assemble those and review them.
Okay, thank you.
If I might add, Madam Chair, too, just that in an earlier whack at this, you and I were paired up and farther back, I think Chuck and I were, it's such a huge undertaking that I've learned this much that we're probably going to do it in chunks, you know, a chunk here, a chunk there. So if you've identified a list of things to be eliminated, that's fine too. You know, it'd be nice to end up with, you know, I try to think of what the, what end product we should have in the document, whatever the policies ought to be. They, the regulations and articles, regulations, policy, whatever they are there, it ought to be as big as it needs to be, but no bigger. It ought to be in a form that's useful enough that somebody actually looks at it, you know, every now and then, whether that be board members, departments, you know, and part of it is organizing it in a meaningful way. I'm not going to go into too much detail here, but I remember this, in my mind, things fell into two different ways of being organized. It's either the internal stuff that's kind of department, a department doesn't involve the public. There's the department interaction with the public and then there's stuff that's just unique to our board at one level in terms of organizing it. The other stuff is, is things that get adopted and they're intended to last for time immemorial unless something major changes, but there's other stuff that just by its very nature is expected to be updated regularly. So I think organizing along those lines and putting in place not only, you know, revamping things as necessary, but putting in place an ongoing process that allows that to happen annually is, is easier said than done, but necessary.
Right. I totally agree with you and it is, it actually is that simple to break it down into those categories. It would make it so much easier to, you know, maintain this and sustain this going forward. I did want to backtrack. The one other thing that I did pull out was we have certain bylaws, not bylaws, policies of the board that pertain to personnel matters. And we had actually circulated our regulations and policies as well as the town code with town employees a few years back and we had gotten feedback from the staff, Mr. Anzaldi at the time, Mr. Bergman as well. And so I took out those comments. I separated them out and I have identified the policies that they pertain to, specifically those comments. So that might be something to undertake as well hand in hand with a review of the personnel bylaws as well. So I can make sure that that information gets shared with the board and specifically you, Mr. Glady and Mr. Anzaldi too. So.
Or as Matthew said, Matthew too.
And Matthew as well. Yep. Yeah. So why don't you break it down into like those categories and separate it out. Like you said, it's not as overwhelming as it appears to be. So I'll definitely circle back and provide all that information.
And I'll let you deal with the personnel section and I will take another chunk of it.
Great. And then the other thing finally was, as the board is aware, the population of Littleton is growing expeditiously where we were dubbed the fifth fastest growing community in the state last year. And so we're, we're over the population of 10,000 right now and that certainly is showing its impact, I think, on, you know, our town departments and many other functions of our community. So one of the things that I did revisit was the town government study that was done a few years ago. I know Mr. Knox was involved in that process at that time, but just pulled that out and took another look at it to see what recommendations exist in that report that we might want to revisit. Certainly at the time that the, that report was created, there were some recommendations made that weren't really relevant or necessary at the time, but there may be some now, given the state that we're in, in our growing population. The amount, the number of people living in our community now that are going to warrant some changes. So I just wanted to bring that to the board's attention as well that maybe we should take another look at, at the town government study.
Certainly. This might be in my two cents worth, but it goes far enough around that I was actually on the board in my first go around and dragged Joe out of his first retirement to chair the thing. So this, this goes back to when Joe and neither one of us had gray hair back then. But that underscores both the need to make, you know, implement, but also it, it strikes me that that was also good 13 years ago and, you know, the world's a little different now. We, the topic area is something I definitely want to embrace. The lessons and messages that were in there are something we should take a look at, but we ought to take a look at it with fresh eyes too.
Right. Okay. All right, great. So I just wanted to start the conversation on those topics. I appreciate it and I'll, I'll share that information that I mentioned during this discussion with everybody to make sure that you have, have all the information about the bylaws and the, just everything. So we can start getting organized and prepare for town meeting in May.
Keep cracking the whip, Madam Chair. We'll get things done.
I think we can, honestly, Paul, I know some people feel like it's, it could be too much at one time, but I think if we're organized enough, we can certainly, we can certainly.
Yeah, a lot of this stuff is related too. A lot of it's administrative organizational stuff and.
Right. Yep. Exactly. All right, good. So we are on to our next agenda item. Mr. Anzaldi.
So Madam Chair, 119 Town Road, Joe's going to speak to this first. And I believe Joe is, Tom going to be joining us?
He, Tom had emailed saying that he was stuck in Zoom meeting and would hopefully be joining us between 7:45 and 8 o'clock. So on any of these, if there's any questions, we could probably just hold them until we have Tom, but I can give an overview as far as this as well as the following agenda items. So before the board for consideration is basically action to execute the purchase and sales, basically to authorize town council to go ahead with the steps required to purchase the land at 119 to Hattawayon. Subject to town councils review of the subscription of land and acceptance of the deed and other related documents. Included in the board's packet is an executive summary of the Phase One Environmental Site Assessment Report. There was some background arsenic that was found, but it was found to be naturally occurring. So there was nothing that really required any sort of remediation or follow-up work. We had done tests. There were some tanks at the site. Those all came out clean and there was no environmental issues that would get in the way of us acquiring the property. So once the final documents are reviewed and approved by town council, that the deed would be recorded in a couple of months, then the town would procure a survey of the property to be recorded and would execute an order of taking based on that survey. Order taking would be just so that we can make sure that we clear up any issues with title.
And if I might add, Joe and Anthony, correct me if I'm wrong here, but our intent here is by these votes, we will effectuate the closing by, before the end of the year, correct? That's our plan?
Correct.
So Madam Chair, you've, you've been diligent about staying out of this for the, the conflict you had through your employment, but once that, that goes through, I think your conflict such as it is, is probably over. In which case, you can be, since there's an affordable housing component to our end plans, I would certainly personally welcome you back into the process so you can dig into that part of the issue.
Right, right. I agree.
Anthony, I think we're ready for a motion here. I mean, we're, we pretty much.
I don't see town councils.
Yeah. Yeah. But Joe summed it up right. I mean, we, we did all the due diligence. We did the testing, you know, and there were some things noted that had to be checked out and, you know, bottom line is the arsenic is there is something you traditionally find around an old farm building anyway, and that's about it. And everything else is kind of in order.
Yeah.
You know, there's a few deed entitled things, but they don't really play into this. They'll come up more of an issue later and they can be dealt with, with the, with the taking, which is just, just a legal mechanism. There's not any hostile taking obviously involved. It just clears the title. But, you know, but this will allow us to, you know, take ownership by the end of the year.
Yeah, I think he was looking for an opportunity to get some face time before the board and the public too. So we can have him in on something else, Tom.
Sure, sure. That's fine. Yeah. There's no, there's no reason to hold this up.
No, there isn't. Nope.
Okay. So ready for motion?
Yeah. Okay, then I will move that the select board vote as follows relative to the pass of land at 119 to Hattawayon Road comprising 23.67 acres, more or less described in Article 8 of the October 18, 2020 special town meeting and further described in plans and deeds of record. One to acquire said land by deed under the authority of Mass General Act Chapter 40 from the owners Derrick M. Brown, Stephen H. Brown and Brown Robbins Trust for a purchase price of $1,200,000, subject to town council's final review of the description of the land, the acceptance of the deed and other related documents.
Okay. Motion's been made in second. And although it's in favor, Mr. Nordhaus?
Aye.
Mr. Glady?
Aye.
Mr. Knox?
Aye.
Mr. DeCoste?
DeCoste is aye.
And Cindy Napoli is going to abstain from this vote. So the motion is approved with four in favor and one abstention. We're on to the next item, Mr. Anzaldi.
Sure. So Madam Chair, I remember this stuff in my time I was here as the assistant and I remember back then I had left the deed and somehow between now and then, I think a couple of things, maybe leaving it happened about it, but we never executed that deed and take possession of the property. So at this point, if the board's ready to do so, we have a motion and we have the deed that we can sign.
Are there any other questions or comments from the board on this? Matter?
Everything is, there's no other outstanding issues that should prevent us from doing this. We were really just a housekeeping matter at this point.
Right. There's two, the only thing, Paul, is obviously we owe taxes to ourselves for this, and, and for last year. So that wasn't cleaned up. But this year we can clean up internally. Last year we would have to petition the state. And so I'll be coming back in another meeting to just authorize the board to have me sign a letter explaining to them that clearly this is, was, appears to be our clerical mistake and we can have the assessors think about the support in the board and then the select board take the same motion and vote to support waiving that taxes for 20.
Ready for the motion, Madam Chair?
Please.
No, hold on, hold on, hold on. So this, what's held this up? Because.
I'm not quite sure, Chuck, to be honest with you. When I left, I thought.
We haven't, we haven't, we haven't recorded the deed. So whoever holds the deed right now is responsible for the taxes. We're not going to waive the taxes.
Well, they signed it over to us. We just never signed it.
April of 2019. That's.
Right.
We've had, we've sat on it.
I'm not sure we have, Joe.
Oh, I would say at the beginning, we wanted to clean some things up at the, at the beginning. The sense and it has just sat there. There hasn't been any resistance certainly from the other side. I think they were under the impression that we had taken it.
They, they still wanted to have another bite at the apple and get the property, right?
I think the issue at the time was they were looking to have that parcel be included in the number of affordable houses, affordable units as part of the project.
So the deed wasn't transferred.
And, and that was not.
That wasn't resolved?
That wasn't part of the planning board decision nor part of the HCA. So to my knowledge, unless Joe has other information, nothing happened with that. I would assume he still needed to fulfill his requirements with the planning board and has done so with the HCA. Joe, you have any other information on that?
No, I mean, since I came on board, all I was basically told was that we're still holding on to the deed and that the next step is going to be for the town to accept the deed.
We had fully. We, we were holding it executed on the other part, but we hadn't executed it.
Correct. We did not actually vote to accept the deed. So there was no signatures for the board for acceptance.
The fields did sign it though, Chuck.
I think the taxes is a matter of when the deed is transferred, when, when it's recorded, but.
But I, but to Anthony's point, I think the ball was in our court. I vividly remember them delivering the signed deed to our meeting. I remember that meeting specifically. And I think that we had one question that we wanted to address with the planning board before we moved forward with recording that deed. And there was just one loop to close with the planning board. Apparently that loop got closed, but the deed never came back to us to be signed and recorded.
And there was a lot of turnover in our offices. I mean, I.
Right, exactly.
My only, I have less of a question with that than just a general point. Anthony, have you run this again by Tom Harrington in case there's some other reason that we're not remembering that this got held up or?
I did. I asked Tom, I asked Maren to, to weigh in on it.
Okay. Let me ask this question. Where were the tax bills being sent for the past two years? To them because they were the owner of record.
Well, they're the owner of record. I would assume that that's, that's correct.
I just think that if it was, if it was a civil matter and it was Joe Knox and Chuck DeCoste were transferring a piece of property that if Joe owned it and I was acquiring it from Joe, he would pay taxes until such time as I recorded the deed or the deed were recorded. I don't know. I'll do whatever the pleasure of the board is, but I just, this has been a pain in the, you know what, for literally six years. It was, it was one of the very first matters that, that I sat on at my, my first meeting. Whatever the pleasure of the board is, I'll, I'll support it in order to get consensus. Whatever the pleasure of the board is, I'll, I'll support it in order to get consensus.
For some of those very same reasons, Chuck, I'd be welcoming an opportunity to get this behind us.
Yeah, I agree.
Let's put the house to some use. It's just sitting there.
Right.
Kind of like Robinson Road.
Right. Well, that's on our agenda coming up.
Yep.
I mean, if, if we're going to start acquiring property with no plan to do anything with it, it's, it's not worth acquiring the property because we end up paying insurance on it. We end up paying repairs and carrying costs and everything.
Well, I think we're getting the Cooper House returning it over to the Housing Authority. That was my understanding.
Mine too.
The Littleton Housing Authority?
I didn't understand it that way. I was, I was under the understanding that it was being turned over to the Board of Selectmen and that we were going to use it for housing.
A housing use is how I remember it. I don't remember specifically the Housing Authority.
All right. I could be mistaken, but for affordable housing purposes, so we'll, we'll make-
It could be turned over to the Affordable Housing-
It could be a veteran. It could be veteran. It could be any number of reasons, but-
Right. Yep.
Yeah, the disposition is still to be determined. I don't think anything, I don't recall any commitment to anything regarding this during my tenure.
Similar to Robinson Road.
So let's take the next step and we'll move to execute the deed, to take possession, and then we'll, we'll take the next step from there.
Motion's up on the screen of-
Yeah, I've got the motion here. Just wasn't sure if the board was ready for me to, to make that.
No, you, I still don't think it's, I don't think it's, I still don't think it's clean, but-
Well, you may end up being right.
Really? I, I mean, I don't see any, any harm in us making sure that it's clean, making sure that we've got it right. And the questions that we've raised tonight are answered before we, I mean, what's, what's another month?
Well, that's why I asked the question. I, I agree with you on that. But, you know, Anthony said he did speak to Tom Harrington about it and spoke to Maren. And as far as they're concerned, the issues are all settled.
He was going to wait to hear back from Tom Harrington though, right?
No, Anthony had from council. Joe, correct? We had no issues with, with council.
Tom, Tom was not aware that there was an outstanding issue that we were awaiting for. Maren had basically said that the, any planning board issues were already resolved. So they're, they're outside of, there was some reference within an email to having Joe Knox and Ed take a look at the condition of, of the house.
Joe and I did take a look at the condition of the house while they were occupying it. And we've, have we done any subsequent inspections? I'm glad Joe was one of the people because it was he and I that were responsible for taking a look at it last time.
I don't know if Ed is still on, but Ed may have walked through that.
But I didn't see it the first time around, so that's why I'm glad that Joe was there. I wish I were there.
I have no problem waiting two weeks so you and I can walk through it again. That's-
Have you walked through it, Joe?
By me?
Have you walked through it?
No, that's what I'm saying. I wouldn't mind waiting two weeks if you and I want to walk through it again.
Yeah.
Okay, that's, that's fair enough.
Comfortable with that. I just, I-
We shouldn't, shouldn't take property lightly, you know, so if there's a, you know, a couple of weeks solves that problem, let's wait.
Okay. All right.
Thanks, Ed, for turning the camera back on, though.
While he's there, does he have anything to add?
I have, I have gone through the house. They had some broken windows when they, when the occupants moved out. They had replaced the windows. They had done a full paint job, repaired the kitchen, brought the front stairs up to code, added a small back deck with a landing and stairs. The, the barn garage building next door still needs some cleanup work done, but the house is habitable minus a failed Title V exists on the property.
Thanks, Ed.
Okay. All right. So we'll, we'll defer this after, till after the walkthrough can be, be completed.
Can I, should I table that?
Anthony, you want to try to set that up?
Sure, absolutely.
Okay.
All right, hit the next slide. Sorry.
That's all right.
So the next item is the Nagog Hill Orchard. I recall working with Paul on this when I was here first time. And now Joe's gotten to carry the torch and got a little experience in dealing with orchards. So Joe, you want to take it and then Paul, certainly you've put a lot of work into this.
Sure, thanks. It's sort of like a memory, a stroll down memory lane for Anthony here. So Paul, Paul and I, along with Town Council and, and also meeting with the current operators of the orchard. We've been working on this quite a bit and, and I think one of the main objectives was to try to make sure that we captured preservation of the orchard, preservation of the pick your own operation and make sure that it ends up being viable. One of the things that we heard was that year-by-year extensions makes it extremely difficult to do long-term purchases for equipment or other investments. And in reviewing this with Town Council, Paul and I had, had gone through trying to make sure what would be sort of in the best interest of the town and make sure that this remains a viable orchard operation. I should note that even this RFP, well, it may be dated 2020 and it's, it's actually has its roots over, you know, three years ago with some of the work that the Select Board had been doing and even getting input from other groups that then had basically resulted in us taking this just across the finish line. So we do have to go out for RFP. It was authorization from, from Town Meeting and that was also communicated that this was the process to the current operators. And it's, it's, it's not overly complex. There's just one outstanding item and we're just reviewing some of the deed and plan information to make sure that the description of the lots is, is accurate. But we feel that this is in good shape to bring in front of the board for approval so we can get this going and go through the process of, of putting this out to bid and considering responses for operation of the orchard.
Good job, Joe. The only thing I would add in just in terms of context, because I know we've given a couple of updates on this along the way. The council made it clear that we had to go out for an RFP. It's just been too long since we'd done that before. Couldn't continue to just do contracts. So we use that as an opportunity to put into the RFP a lot of the things that people had raised as issues that we wanted to see captured in there. So whether it's the present operators, which is our assumption, or it's certainly open to anybody else who applies for it. The accountability, the reporting requirements so that we have a better record of, you know, what's planted, what's called out, what's, what's produced. We put into writing the right to have an annual professional review of the property so that it, you know, we have people, orchardists or whatever else of our own choosing to come in and, and handle it. The longer term contract that's implied here or suggested will, as Joe said, give the orchard operators the incentive to put capital investment into the property, which, you know, hasn't been there. What else was in there, Joe? Am I forgetting something? There was some other?
I mean, that's, that's basically it. And I think there's, there's a number of-
Oh, succession planning. There's some concerns about, about Charles's, God bless him, he's been terrific. But, you know, we, we never knew where we would be if one day we woke up and he was not there. And he went, well, now I'm gonna, you know, if it does remain in his hands, his son is now in there running the business and there. One of the requirements of the RFP is to provide a full business plan with succession planning and emergency provisions and all the rest of it. And again, that would be open to anybody applying to, to run it. But those protections which were cited a couple of years ago, we're finally getting into some written form. And by including them in the RFP, then, you know, it's not something we so much have to negotiate after the fact. We're just making it a term of the, of the offer. If you're interested, you have to satisfy these terms.
Can I, I, I do have a question. Who, who's going to review their proposals and decide on which one is awarded?
They go into what, Joe and Anthony? You guys get them first and then bring somebody to us?
It's, it's us. We're the, we're the-
Well, at the end of the day, yeah, but the initial review would be, yeah.
That's fine. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions or comments from the board? Ready for motion?
I will move that the Select Board vote to authorize the request for proposal for the Nagog Hill Orchard.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. And all those in favor, Mr. Nordhaus?
Yes.
Mr. Decost?
Decost is aye.
Mr. Glady?
Aye.
Mr. Knox?
Aye.
And Cindy Napoli is aye. The motion is approved as written.
I'd like to thank Paul and Joe for doing that. This has been in limbo for so long and it's been on, on my mind, on, you know, that I've definitely heard some comments about it. So I'm, I'm really glad. It sounds like you were diligent and you did a thorough job in capturing the requirements and the requests of the, of the community about that very valuable and beautiful property. So well done.
Thank you. And, yeah, take it upon yourself to, to go up and get yourself more familiar with it personally anytime you want. Charles is open to that.
Great. Thank you. And we are on to 60, 12 Robinson Road, a discussion about disposition of the property.
We are D.
We got the D marijuana.
Oh, sorry, skipped over one. Non-retail marijuana amendments.
Yeah, Madam Chair, so we had an inquiry from a cultivation person that was looking at Littleton. And one thing that when I was speaking with Joe, they noticed, or Joe noticed that our regulations actually had dates, or our application had dates when they had to submit by. I think at the time, dates were there because there was two licenses that were being issued for retail. And then that kind of just carried over to non-retail. So Joe, you want to take it from here and discuss the, what we need?
Sure, thanks. So, I mean, Anthony had it exactly right. One of the things is, is that there is a process when someone is interested in looking non-marijuana, non-retail marijuana establishment within town. There is a information portal that we direct people to. And then there's links that then identify the process. And the attorney representing the people interested in the marijuana establishment raised a question as far as what is that, that process like? And we noticed that that deadline of April 26, 2019 was in there. And totally understand when there was multiple entities coming in front of the board, you want to be able to really review and make sure that depending on the number of licenses and host community agreements that you want to sign, that you're, you're getting some viable businesses rather than some that are just kicking the tires. And so in looking at this, we've also had a lot more experience in negotiating HCAs and discussing entering into HCA agreements since 2019. So it just raised and highlighted for us that we wanted to make sure that we, staff as well as the, the board, we're all on the same page as far as making sure that we can provide uniform guidance to prospective businesses coming into town so that we can make sure that, you know, again, we're just not getting someone kicking the tires, that we're getting someone that's really interested in locating and assisting the town. So within the packets, did include the information request form as well as that background process. Did pass this on to Chair Napoli and she actually had a great job sort of taking it upon herself and, and editing things to sort of bring it up to date. So that may be something that for the next meeting, we can bring that for consideration for the board to make sure that we can provide adequate guidance for businesses looking to locate within, within Littleton and update our, our website and portal to make sure that we have the process the board would like to see in place.
Thank you, Mr. Layden. So essentially in reviewing those requirements, we had a deadline of April 26, 2019. Clearly we've passed that deadline. And the other information that we had in there that proved difficult through the process was we gave ourselves like a two-week timeframe to respond to certain applications. So really changing that from two weeks to 30 days were a couple of the changes I made. So we can certainly circulate that with the board. It's been done in red line just to make this more current going forward. Any other questions or comments from the board? No? Okay. Thank you. And now we are on to item 6E, 12 Robinson Road.
So Madam Chair, there's been always discussion anytime we have to renew policy, our insurance policy about vacant buildings that we own and insurance companies just always balk at, at them. And, you know, with that, it's come up, just to put this, you know, on the agenda. Is there any disposition? Obviously there's a number of things that the town could choose to do with this. They could keep it. You could put an RFP to sell it. You could do an RFP to lease it. You could, a number of things. It just, I think that the goal was always to carry that historic deed restriction with the property. So any board has any thoughts on?
Yeah. If I can just jump in, there hasn't been a whole lot of activity in the past six months on this property. The last point we had, we had the working group, which included Linda Stein from the Historic Commission, Carolyn Mueller, myself, Ed Mullin was helping out first in his capacity in planning one. And then, then as he moved into being building commissioner, he was still helpful to us. But our internal local candidates who, you know, had ideas of doing, you know, some sort of museum, museum slash coffee shop on site there, that's, that's kind of drifted away. I just checked my emails and Linda's last email to me in October was basically acknowledging that they don't, they don't on the Historic Commission have a identified-
Paul, she is, she does have her hand raised. I just wanted to-
Okay, well, we can get her in a moment, but let me just finish what I'm saying here. But thank you for pointing that out. Also, the, we did have, somebody was referred this past summer, whether it was through Joe Layden or Nina, I don't recall, a woman from Harvard was interested in the property. Never panned out. We provided her her information. One of the, one of the problems, of course, is the building's pretty well bolted up. It's not an easy property for somebody to go take a look at. I, you know, I heard there was another party interested, but it wasn't something that ever came across my desk. I would think the important thing to do is just get the, the historic deed restriction on it, which is something we've only held back because it can be, it can be structured by Jenny and, and Tom Harrington's office any number of ways depending upon who the end-use buyer is. The language is not difficult to, to produce. But, you know, we, we certainly should, I'm not opposed to disposing of it as long as we put a historic restriction on it and, and just touch base again with the Historic Commission. So if Linda's on the call, that's great.
So if I could jump in before we, before we open it up though, that's what Town Meeting voted for, was to purchase it with the intent of putting a historic deed, just putting the deed restriction on it to protect the, the historic value of the property.
Yep.
So if there's different dispositions, that's really the first thing we need to act upon. I think it's, it's our responsibility. We can seek out the information from, from the Historic Commission or the Cultural Committee or anyone else. But ultimately, we need to make that decision. We need to execute on that. That's what Town Meeting told us to do. So we need to get that recorded as such. And then we can't carry this property. We either have to do something with it and have a plan to do something with it or dispose of it and do an RFP and put it out there. If someone ends up buying it for a dollar and they keep, they keep it historic and they're the ones that are paying the taxes and paying the bills and doing whatever they're doing with it.
All right. I'm not, certainly not opposed to that. Board members, nobody's raised an issue on it for months, but as I say, we had two different entities apparently expressed interest in it and we had one-
The deed restriction wasn't on it, Paul. I thought it was automatic.
Okay, well, and there's, it, there shouldn't be one on there now unless we- Okay, well, and there shouldn't be one on there now unless we have decided on a specific course of action. If our specific course of action, which is okay with me, is that there's no internal candidate, then we can go put a generic deed restriction on it and then put it out for sale. You're not going to get too many buyers because people are well aware of the condition of the building. The only reason we did not put one on it yet is because they, depending upon who the known end-user is, you may well want to tailor it to that use and need. So if it was going to be a museum, then you might want to make sure that that use is allowed. If it was going to be something with a coffee shop, you got to make sure that use is allowed. So it's not just we didn't put a deed restriction. We consciously did not put a deed restriction on it because we were waiting to see what the end use is going to be.
Yeah, absolutely, Paul. Absolutely to your point. And that's why it wasn't, depending on whether it was leased or if it was sold outright, it was a different type of deed restriction that had to be on it. So it had to be determined what the disposition of the property was going to be before we placed that on, Chuck. That was my recollection of three years ago.
And I think Council's given us a memo to that effect at somewhere along the line.
I'm sure there's something, yeah.
Well, the other thing to keep in mind, too, is that we use CPC funding to purchase the property, correct?
In part, yep.
Yeah, in part. So there's restrictions on it in that, you know, in that alone. So we definitely need to revisit this and take a look at it and see what those restrictions are as well. So.
I'm happy to move on with it. I'm just saying that it wasn't neglect in the power of putting that.
That wasn't, that wasn't my intent, Paul, is to point fingers and place blame. It's just that my understanding was that we've ordered the Town Meeting to purchase the property so that it wouldn't get knocked down or used for something that we didn't want it used for, that we had some control over retaining some historical value. So it was my understanding, when we purchased it, we did record it. We just didn't put a deed restriction on it and record it. I guess my understanding was that when it was recorded, that we purchased it, that it was deed restricted then and there, and that we were able to go, I didn't get into the, I didn't realize that there was other types of restrictions that could or could not be put on. But we do need to act on that. We need to, you know what, get off the pot. We need to do something with it or do nothing with it.
Okay.
By do nothing with it, I mean get rid of it. Place the deed, place the deed restriction and sell it.
All right. Well, let's gauge what our options are. I'd like to hear from Linda Steins on the call. She's still there?
Yes, she is.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can.
Okay. So, yeah, everything everybody said sounds right in my experience with this property. I want to echo what Anthony said, that depending on who buys it or if it's leased or whatever, that may change what the historic deed restriction will say, the language of it. And I was working with the Town Council's office, I can't remember the lawyer's name, but.
Jenny Merrill.
What's that?
Jenny Merrill.
Yes, that's right. She was the one who emphasized to me that we can't really finalize the deed restriction until we know what the disposition of it will be. And that's why, that's one reason it wasn't finalized.
Right.
So the Historical Commission would like to continue to work with Jenny going forward to work out the language in terms of what exactly will be preserved in the deed restriction for the future owner. One thing I want to mention is that, well, two things, the deed restriction is a requirement. Because, partially because it was acquired totally with CPC funds, the deed restriction has to be put on. It's not, you know, an option. It's a requirement. And part of the deed restriction is that there must be a holder of the deed restriction. And the holder is a group, an organization or an entity that enforces the deed restriction, make sure the owner is following what's in the deed restriction. And the holder has to be either a qualified nonprofit group or the Littleton Historical Commission. So I just want to let you know that's something that will have to happen as well, having that holder. I was planning to talk to a couple of the major nonprofits in the state who do this kind of work. And I can do that and pass that information on to the selectmen. So. That's all.
All right, great. Thank you. Thanks for that update.
Sure.
Okay, so we'll have to do some homework here and circle back and revisit this once we get more information.
Yeah, happy to get this behind us. I mean, we've given every opportunity for anybody in town and even outside of town to come and take a shot at it. It just isn't there. So the important thing is to protect it. And if we can protect it and turn it back to the public, to the private sector, terrific.
Right, right.
So just to clarify, the restriction can be held by the town as well?
You mean the holder of the restriction?
Correct.
Well, it's a little complicated.
I'm just reading the state's website right now, Linda.
Well, it can be held by the town if the town doesn't own the property. If the town continues to own the property, then the town cannot also be the holder because it would be a conflict of interest. And a qualified nonprofit would have to be the holder if the town continues to hold the property. And that's another reason why the deed restriction can't be finalized because we don't know who the holder will be, you know, depending on what I just said.
Yeah. Yeah, that is, that was my recollection too, Linda.
Okay. Well, the state's website is saying that a local historical commission cannot hold a preservation restriction on a town-owned property.
That's not true. Well, that's not correct.
I'm just reading. I don't.
Okay, but I spoke to the head of the, at the Mass.
We'll dig.
The head of the program and we discussed this.
Right. We need to look at if we use CPC funding to purchase the home.
We did.
So we need to look at what restrictions that entails. Is it a historic, is it a historic home as far as the town concerned? I know it's not on the National Register, but is it a historic property on the towns?
It is.
Do we have any registered?
No, it's, no.
We do have a couple.
Yeah, it is a historic home according to the town. It is under, right now, it's under review. We put in a National Register application. It's being reviewed right now.
Right.
State.
Right. Okay, so we need to circle back on this and just get all this information together so we can really take a better look at this property because there seems to be a few unanswered questions. So Anthony, can you work with Linda on that and just?
Yeah, sure.
Well, I think Paul needs to be involved. The board of selectmen still owns this.
No, I understand that. I'm talking about Chuck, just one second, just to get us the information that we need so that we can have a constructive, informed discussion about the disposition of this property. We don't have all the information right now. So we need to gather all that information.
But it shouldn't be hard to do. We can probably turn that around pretty quick.
Right, yeah, exactly, exactly. So. Okay. Thank you, Linda, for coming on the call and giving us an update.
Great, thank you.
Madam Chair, I want to apologize to Anita Harding. I guess she was on looking to speak regarding personal bylaws was being discussed, but we didn't recognize, I didn't see her hand. I just happened to look over and I saw Linda's hand raised, so I apologize to her. We certainly, I don't want her to think that we let Linda speak and not her. I just, I didn't see it.
Okay, I appreciate that. It happens. Okay, so we're on to the next agenda item, 6F.
Oh, sorry.
That's all right.
So we have a grant submission and Joe's going to discuss this because he's working with Chris Dodditt and I'm not sure of Chris.
Yeah, okay.
Oh, thanks, Chris.
You're a trip. Just sound a little more excited.
It's eight thirty at night, so I just woke up.
What else are we going to do tonight?
Yeah, exactly, exactly. Yeah, so basically what this is, is Mass DOT has put out a new grant program. It's called Shared Winter Streets and Spaces. It's a $10 million grant opportunity for towns to apply and get up to $300,000 for different projects. We recently had a call with the, with one of the members of Mass DOT who's kind of overseeing this project or at least answering questions about it. And we kind of picked their brains a little bit about different projects we had in town and what would be a good candidate. What we've settled on was this trail between Wellington Drive or actually Goldsmith Street and Cooper Farm all the way up to Great Road. The trail is supposed to be being installed. What we want to do is improve it. We want to make it wider, put a nice bridge over the brook that's down there and pave it. So we did reach out to the Conservation Commission. We had a site walk with Amy Green and also BPAC. So they all agree that this is a good project. So we'd like to get your, I guess, your approval to submit the grant application for up to $300,000. The intention would be, this is a fast hitter. We have to actually have the money fully spent by May 31st. So we would be, if we got awarded, we'd be notified February 2nd and we would start construction basically immediately after that. With Highway Department staff, we'd be renting the appropriate equipment that we need and get it done by May.
I say I have that up on the screen, what you included in your memo.
Oh, yeah. So you can see from the Goldsmith section to about where that barn is. That's actually, Steve Marsh is responsible for doing that portion of it. So we would be taking over from where he ends and improving it all the way to Great Road pavement. Like I said, be 10 feet wide in most of the area, next down in a couple of spots to about eight feet wide, but it'd be about a 10-foot wide path all the way through there.
Chris, what do you mean by a nice bridge?
Well, we reached out to the Conservation Commission and what we need to do is because of the brook there, we have to put a three-sided box culvert in. It's only going to be about a foot and a half, two feet tall. Obviously, we'd put railings on the sides of it, but.
Similar to chestnut?
What's that?
Similar to chestnut?
Yeah, but not nearly that size.
Okay.
It's only going to end up being about, yeah, it's about 10 feet long, maybe three feet tall at the very most.
Okay, good. And that would all be covered under the $300,000 grant?
Correct.
Nice.
Okay. Any other questions or comments from the board?
I do.
All right, great.
Well, this will be obviously restricted to bikes and pedestrians and no motorized vehicles, all that kind of stuff, right?
Oh, yeah, no, it would, yeah, the only motorized vehicles would be like emergency vehicles. We would, we'd probably end up putting similar to like those bollards at the beginning that the emergency vehicles could remove if necessary, but it keeps vehicular traffic out.
Okay.
Sounds good. Thank you.
All right, great. Any other questions? Are we ready for a motion?
Actually, before we do the motion, Anthony, can you pull that map up again? Is there any benefit to us dropping it on the other side, on the Church Meadow, Church Landing, Church Meadows side versus the possibility of us putting some sort of a field on the Cooper Farm field? Because with that path, is the red line an estimate, Chris, or is that?
It's actually pretty accurate where it is going to go.
So you're taking about an extra 20 feet of what's already a restricted potential field area, which is how that was sold to the residents that that was going to be.
Yeah, there's actually, there's actually, there's actually a path there now.
A little gravel, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, we would just be improving the gravel location. But if you wanted to jump over that wall and go on the other side of it, I wouldn't have a problem there because the town does own that. And logistically, it actually makes my life easier because of the way the grades work behind the condos right where it says Dean Lane is pretty steep and pretty narrow right in there.
So if you were the tree line where, as you're paralleling, I guess, Dean Lane heading towards that tree line that goes up towards Donlands, if you will, if you went directly onto the Church Meadow property there and then hug the tree line, that'd be better for you?
Yeah, it would be actually a lot better. Yeah, if we went to the north side of that tree line, that would make my life way easier.
Chris, isn't this a big field here too?
Yeah, but you're on the backside of it right now. So we wouldn't have an issue with that.
But that also.
Yeah, that is a good idea.
We have that leased, though. Is that a problem?
I don't know who you're asking. I don't know.
We need to get a status on that lease.
Yeah, we do.
We, I don't know.
I'd propose that we, I know it's a fast mover, Chris.
Well, so Mass DOT won't, I mean, we can make that determination basically in the field. If we own that piece of property, we can just jump the trail on that side.
Basically, what we're, the Great Road.
Yeah, the grant we're applying for is to get from Great Road to Goldsmith Street. How we get there, it's really up to us basically, as long as we have either easements or ownership of the property. And we have easements all through.
We could directly come through the lower field then of Church Meadows. We could come, where you, we could go to the other side of that tree line, then it come to the outside of the portion of the meadow that I believe we leased, which is the upper field, right?
Now, I'm confused now. Say that again.
There's two, there's basically, you have the upper field that's closest to Great Road at Church Meadows, and then you have a tree line, and then you have a lower field?
No, that lower, that lower field is going to take a massive amount of more work to get to go into and near. Because where we're crossing, yeah, if you see where the red line curves kind of to the north straight up, just to the left-hand side of that is all wetland.
You can see, yeah, you can see where there's trees and there's no trees, right?
Yeah, so it's, and the cost starts to balloon at that point.
No, that's, that's fine.
But going into, jumping over that tree line to the north of that tree line is very doable as long as I have the right to do it. I'll do that. It'd make my life a lot easier.
Yeah, we need to look at that lease, I guess.
Yeah, we do. That's a good suggestion, Chuck. But yeah, let's take a look at that.
Once in a while, Cindy.
I know, right? Right down the date. Good you. All right, good. So we're ready for a motion on this?
Okay, move that the select board vote to support and authorize submission of an application by the Director of Public Works to Massachusetts Department of Transportation's Shared Winter Streets and Spaces Grant Program for a Trail Improvement Grant for the Cooper Wellington Connector Trail.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. And all those in favor, Mr. Knox?
Aye.
Mr. DeCoste?
DeCoste's eye.
Mr. Glady?
Aye.
Mr. Nordhaus?
Aye.
Cindy Napoli is aye, and the motion is approved as written. Thanks. Thank you very much, Chris, for your work on this.
Thank you.
Great, thanks.
Thanks for getting the sidewalks done, too.
Anytime, buddy. Told you I'd get them done.
Okay, next.
Yeah, Madam Chair, before we go on, I just want to recognize the Town Council is here. And if we don't need him, I just want a little FaceTime. Hello, Tom.
No, don't give him FaceTime. That costs us money.
Please, everybody, for being late.
He put a tie on and everything.
I did.
If you don't need Tom Council, I'm sure he has other matters that he could address, but if there's any lingering questions.
I don't think we need him right now.
Just nice to see him.
Yeah. Thanks for popping in, Tom.
Nice to see all of you, too. Okay, happy holidays, everybody.
Thank you, you too.
Thanks, Tom.
Bye-bye.
Bye-bye. So, Madam Chair, just the next item is the Select Board Schedule, really leading up for the first quarter of 2021. And these are just the meetings that we know about right now, but I would anticipate Cheryl may have some requests for some other meetings, or maybe not. But these are all either regularly scheduled meetings or meetings that we went over at the last meeting because they're budget meetings, the two Tuesdays in a row plus the Saturday. So I wanted to throw this out here to the board just in case there was any questions or conflicts or anything.
Anthony, that list is different than the one that was in the packet I got. Could you, just before I forget, email that? I can read the motion off of that list, but can you email that list there, too? Because it incorporates the joint meetings that are on the other list.
I will, yeah. I abbreviated that list because that one that was in the packet was, there was a lot of other stuff in there that I don't think needed to be in. there was a lot of other stuff in there that I don't think needed to be in there. So that's why I just shrunk it down here and I can, I can email this to you.
Okay. But are you saying that this, uh, list that's here, I should read the motions in the packet and not from this list?
Um, you can, yeah, you can read the list in the packet. Let me just.
Yeah, because that only has the two, the two regular board meetings each month. Either way, it's fine with me. I just don't want to lose any of these in the cracks.
Uh, let me just look at it for a second. 11/25th, 8/22nd, 12/25th. Yeah, I didn't put April, Paul. So if you wanted to just read from this list and, and, um, that would be better than, than the packet because I didn't go into April yet.
But there are April dates on the, in the packets. You want me to ignore that and read from the, listen, I'm not sure the board numbers are, well, the board members can see the motions here. So read from this list to be the cleanest thing, you say?
I think so, yeah, at this point. And then, and then we'll go through the, the second quarter, uh, at a meeting in, in, uh, in March or later February.
All right. And you've already been vetted, vetted out, uh, holidays and that kind of thing?
They have been, yes.
Yeah, okay. All right, Madam Chair, unless any board members get the objection, any of those dates, you want me to go through that?
Please.
Okay. Uh, but I will make a motion, move that the board vote to schedule regular meetings, um, and joint meetings as noted on the following dates, Monday, January 11th, regular meeting. Uh, these are all 2021. Tuesday, January 12th, joint meeting with FinCom. Tuesday, January 19th, joint meeting with FinCom. Monday, January 25th, uh, regular meeting. Saturday, February 6th, joint meeting with FinCom. Monday, February 8th, regular meeting. Monday, February 22nd, regular meeting. Monday, March 8th, regular meeting. Monday, March 22nd, regular meeting. Monday, March 29th, regular meeting.
Motion's been made. Was that a second, Matthew?
That was a second. I just.
How we, how we running tonight?
Uh, I've only done like two.
Oh.
Chuck's been jumping in really fast.
Of course. So the motion's been made in second and all those in favor, Mr. Nordhaus?
Yes.
Mr. DeCoste?
I thought I was muted every time, Matthew. I thought you were going. Mr. DeCoste is aye.
Mr. Glavy?
Aye.
Cindy Napoli is aye. Mr. Knox?
Aye.
Aye. So we have our meeting scheduled. We have a busy few months coming up, which is all good.
Yep.
Next item, Mr. Insaldi.
Madam Chair, the last item for the TA, Assistant TA update is, uh, the Local Rapid Recovery Planning Grant. And our Assistant Town Administrator, Phil Layden, will go through that.
Hey, uh, thank you. Um, so this, uh, before the board is just a request to authorize submission and um, uh, signing of a grant under the Local Rapid Recovery Planning Grant Program. This is something that was just announced a few weeks ago. Um, and, uh, rather than providing the town with, say, funds to then go and select a consultant, uh, the town would then be working with DHCD with the consultant that they would have chosen to then, uh, provide assistance. Um, trying to identify something because it needs to be done by June 30th, wanted to have something that was sort of like a easy, uh, bite sized thing to not only undertaken and, um, implement, uh, but then something that, uh, we could start to really make connections, um, here in Littleton. Uh, so being, uh, trying to, uh, the purpose to support recovery, uh, we're proposing that we, uh, use this to, uh, basically start up a, uh, shop local Littleton, uh, program. Uh, basically what we would, uh, propose to do is utilize, um, consultant services to then also work with the, uh, EDC as well as Littleton Business Association and town staff to reach out to businesses, um, start to identify what would be part of their, their story, um, identify services and goods that they provide. And, uh, that would form the, the basis for then, um, a program whereby which we can utilize on the web developer brochure um, and remind, um, and encourage Littleton residents to, to shop local, uh, not only for goods, but also for services. Uh, this is sort of based off of, uh, effort that I had done in my previous community, um, where, uh, we worked with our EDC to create a shop graft and campaign. Um, and it was something that, that businesses really appreciated. Um, it didn't cost a lot of money, but it was something that having the town or having businesses know that the town has your back um, and trying to encourage people to keep their dollars, uh, within the town was viewed, uh, very supportively. So I know that this sort of lines up with some of the efforts that Chuck and the EDC have been, uh, doing as well. Um, and this would be a good opportunity, uh, to get some professional assistance to try to, uh, move forward, uh, on an effort such as this.
It also lines up with Littleton Business Association because the business association just two years ago, three years ago, did a shop, uh, Littleton campaign also. Man, they already have signs and they have a website too.
Yeah, I know there's a Facebook page.
Yeah, Facebook.
Yeah.
And, and, and that's one of the things like, you know, it, I, one of the nice things, and this is, this is, you know, the, uh, not to get, um, too much into it, but one of the things by having also some buy-in and, and having the town as a partner, um, uh, sometimes you sort of need having a long view and someone that can bring groups together. Um, and, you know, the board, uh, staff is in a unique position to assist in that as well. And also to remind people that, you know, we, we are, are here to support everyone. So we're just not, um, you know, the, the administration, we're just not the local, uh, government, but, um, we value each and every resident and also each and every business. Um, so it, it definitely can, um, take advantage of some of the previous work that was done. Um, but then try to make sure that we can also have a level of, um, uh, consistency going forward and support each other going forward so that we can make sure that it becomes an annual endeavor.
Right.
Ready for a motion, Madam Chair?
Please.
Thanks for your work on this, Joe.
Yeah, thank you.
Move that the select board vote to support and authorize submission of the Local Rapid Recovery Planning Grant for the development of a shop local Littleton program.
Second.
Motion's been made in second and all those in favor, Mr. Knox?
Aye.
Mr. Nordhaus?
Aye.
Mr. DeCoste?
As close as I.
Mr. Glavy?
Aye.
Cindy Napoli is aye. The motion is approved as written.
Look at your Nordhaus over there.
And meeting minutes?
Yep, we've got minutes from the December 7th meeting. Assume everybody had a chance to look them over. Any, any, uh, changes?
They appear to be all accurate and correct and complete to me.
Perfect.
Thanks again to Sue Raymond, I'm assuming?
That's correct.
Right, okay. Then I will move the board vote to approve the regular session meeting minutes of December 7th, 2020.
Second.
Motion's been made in second and all those in favor, Mr. Knox?
Aye.
Mr. Nordhaus?
Aye.
Mr. DeCoste?
As close as I.
Mr. Glavy?
Aye.
Cindy Napoli is aye. The motion, uh, the minutes are approved as written. Thank you again, Sue, for your excellent work. And that concludes our meeting. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Can I just wish everyone a very Merry Christmas? I'd have a.
Merry Christmas to you all.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Holiday.
Thank you to all the.
Thank you.
Employees for all their work this year.
Here, here.
It's been a tough year, but it's, uh, there's a lot to be proud of in Littleton.
Yep, absolutely.
Good meeting tonight, Madam Chair.
We've seen a lot of gen, a lot of generosity for all of the hardships that's, I keep prised by, uh, the amount, the number of donations we've approved in the last three or four months has been, um, out of, out of hand. So.
Yeah.
Well done, everyone.
It's a great community.
Amazing.
Thank you all.
Great.
Thank you.
Merry Christmas.
Thank you all. Revere a motion.
The motion was made.
Made by Paul, seconded by Matthew. That'll help too.
Excellent. Motion made in second to adjourn. All those in favor, Mr. Knox?
Aye.
Mr. DeCoste?
DeCoste is aye.
Mr. Nordhaus?
Mr. Nordhaus is aye.
Mr. Glavy?
Aye.
Cindy Napoli is aye. And that concludes our meeting for this evening. Thank you, Mr. Insaldi and Mr. Layden for your work. Hope everybody has a safe and happy holiday. Mask up and we will see you soon. Good night, everyone.
In the new year.
Have a new year.
In the new year. Good night.
Bye.
Merry Christmas.